Okay, we got a forum, we're gonna call this meeting to order. This is the Thursday, March tenth, two thousand twenty-two, special council meeting. Would you please write some pledge allegiance? And the purple flag is over that, so give it kind of that shot. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. Henry Ford, which stands as one nation under God, indivisible, infinite and just as for all. Then if we call the roll, please.
Councilmember Alafonker Buciaris is arriving in a few. Councilmember Freeman.
There.
Councilmember Sneddon is on present. Mayor of the town, Tom Harmon, not yet present. Councilmember Oscar Buciaris.
Present.
Councilmember Jordan.
Here.
And Mayor Russ.
Here.
Good. And should read the first slide of this.
No, it is. Item one, budget work session for fiscal year twenty twenty-three.
Thank you. Governor, Governor Mayor, members of the city council and staff, my name is Keith Martin. I'm the city's finance director. And it's my pleasure to present the kickoff presentation session for the upcoming budget cycle for fiscal year twenty twenty-three. Next slide, please.
Before we be going, can I just ask that everyone in here be as quiet as possible? Because this is our audio device for people who are participating remotely and background noise interferes with it. And also, please make sure to project when you are speaking.
Thank you. So here's the agenda for today's session. So first, we're gonna talk about the objective for the session to make sure we're all on the same page. And really dive into some of the key highest priority workload, um, priority issues for each of the city departments. We'll then spend a little bit of time just making sure we all have the same level of understanding of our, of our city's financial and budgetary structures. We'll talk a little bit, uh, just a little bit about each of the major enterprises in the city and some of the internal service funds. We'll spend the bulk of the afternoon really diving into the general fund, which makes up the largest portion of our funding. Talk about our revenues, our expenditures, our reserves, talk about the multi-year forecasting process that we did. We'll also then dive into our budget process, which will be the, the next few months ahead in our calendar. And then take any questions, have public comment and have a discussion. There are breaks in, within the PowerPoint today, so there'll be time for some Q and A after each of the major sections today. So I welcome Q and A and a robust discussion during those, during those breaks. Next slide, please. So first, let's jump into the objectives of the day and then talk about workload priorities. Next slide, please. So why is the budget important? Let me just start there. I think it's important because for these four major reasons. First, it's a statement of our priorities as a city, right? It communicates to the public what we do, why, what we're doing with your money and, and why, why it's a good thing, what we're doing with your money. It allocates our limited resources. We don't have as much money as we want to do, all the things that we want to do. So it's a statement of our priorities. Next, it's a control tool. We can't spend money as an organization unless the city council authorizes us to do so. It's a control mechanism that you have the authority to do through the annual budget process or through any time staff asks you to approve something on council agenda report. It's in a, it's a control tool. It's also a management tool. It demonstrates our effectiveness and our efficiencies as an organization, again, given our limited resources. And finally, it's a planning tool. It links strategic initiatives and objectives to financial resources. Uh, and it allows us to really talk about our long-term financial sustainability. So with that in mind, next slide, please. I'm posing these six major objectives for today's session to you all. First, ask questions. Let's just ask questions, make sure we're on the same page. It doesn't matter what it is. Uh, I think this is a really great opportunity to have a working session and talk about, you know, burning issues and questions you might have. Let's understand what are our revenue trends? There's been a lot of change in the economy in particular due to COVID. Let's understand what those are and what that means for us going forward. Let's realize what our cost drivers are. We have lots of ongoing operating and capital costs that we are able to project with some high degree of reasonableness. Let's understand what those are. Let's acknowledge what the economic impacts that affect our particular city budget are. Let's discuss prioritization. And finally, I think we should look beyond one year. This is a one-year budget, but we know that the city's gonna be here forever, so it's important that we think long-term. Next slide, please. So with that, I'll turn it over to.
Good afternoon, Mayor, Councilor Rebecca York, City Administrator. Uh, so we've asked each of the departments to list their priority, top three or four priorities for workload for the coming year. So you have a sense of the big items or issues that they're working on. I want to say that in addition to these priorities, they all have their background level of routine work that is also going on. So I don't want there to be a misunderstanding that this is all that's happening within the department. And then there are also a number of priorities that didn't make the top, top cut. So a lot of work going on. We wanted you to do those that we thought were the highest priorities for the community and for the departments to accomplish. Starting with the airport department, they are working on their fixed base operator redevelopment, moving the operations for fixed base operators across the airfield. Working on terminal expansion, our airport is doing amazingly well. And in fact, today, we saw the announcement that Southwest will now be adding Sacramento to their routes. And working on the airline and rental car agreements. Waterfront is working to resume their capital program that was stalled because of COVID and COVID-related revenues. Address deferred maintenance, ongoing issue for anyone operating capital infrastructure. And working to budget, balance their budget and fee structure so they can have a sustainable, long-term operation at, at our wonderful waterfront harbor. Next slide, please. Our police department, highest priority is equipment and retention. Uh, to that, in assistance with that, re-establishing the cadet program. And also restructuring patrol and developing alternative call response approach. You have questions about any of these? We have the department heads reach in the departments in, in the, uh, audience and they are able to answer. Fire Department is working on the community risk assessment. GPS-based dispatching and vegetation management. Next slide. Library is working on the transition from black gold to an independent catalog. The new network for the public internet access. Library on the van, ago van and early literacy services and east side library master plan. Parks and Recreation is reinvesting community services in the youth program, apprentice, youth apprentice programs, sir. Program. Uh, negotiating a new joint lease agreement with the school district and city college. Doing a park asset inventory and reinvestment plan. And advancing, hoping to advance Dwight Murphy and Ortega Park renewal projects. Next slide. Public Works is continuing the pavement program funded through MDC, working to further the police station project. Working on De La Guerra Plaza redesign and redevelopment. Working on the Pachuma water master contract renewal. Working on the downtown parking rate structure. And working on desalination operations plan. Sustainability and resilience is working on the Santa Barbara Clean Energy Reserves and Programs. It's our new program for, um, hundred percent clean energy. Solid Waste Agreement, Haller Franchise Agreement, our Haller Franchise Agreement will expire in a couple of years and time to get started on looking at that. Enhanced encampment and litter cleanup. And sea level rise plan, high priority projects. Next slide. In my office, we are working to align our resources to the city's revenue sources, hire a police chief and hire a new airport director. Our city attorney's office top priority is to re-establish the sign ordinance review committee. Next slide, please. Finance, working on the pension management strategy, police facility debt issuance, online business license tax, customer service improvements. Under human resources, classification and compensation study, labor negotiations. Further developing our diversity, equity and inclusion program, improvement and retention strategies. Next slide, please. Community development is working on the State Street master plan, the housing element, the general plan, EIR update. Building and safety code compliance division, uh, which is a new division to address, to respond to all code compliance, both zoning and building. And homelessness and affordable housing grant management. In information technology, we're working on IT governance, our new website. Cloud Office three sixty-five and continuing and always continuing to strengthen cybersecurity. Next slide, please. That, I will turn it over to Mr. Dean Martin, but I just do want to say this is just a small amount of the very large workload that your departments have planned for the coming year. And you will hear more about that in their budget presentations.
Ms. Wood, Ms. Ger. The next slide, please. Just spend a little bit of time talking about the structures that we have in place for accounting and our budget. Uh, the budgeting and accounting and the home sector is much different than the private sector. We are a very, very structured, segregated, um, systems and tools for accounting for our money coming in and going out. We use what's called fund accounting, where we, where we track most of our activities in separate and unique funds. For example, we have a water fund. Another example is we have the general fund. And so there's separate and unique funds where we track our revenues and expenditures as well as record our assets and our liabilities. Next slide, please. I want to have a few slides here to make sure that, that members of the public and staff know that we pride ourselves in transparency of our financial and budgetary information. We have all of the relevant documents on our city's website. On this page here, we have, uh, budget documents from many years. We have our, um, annual comprehensive financial reports from multiple years back, as well as other supplemental reports as well. All this information is on our website for public consumption. Next slide, please. We've improved our transparency over the years by implementing this online, uh, financial transparency tool powered by Open Gov. Which is a tool that allows people to go into and, um, and click and drill down into particular departments and programs and initiatives where they find, that they find interesting and want to learn about. And we have ledgers tool over the past couple of years. For example, it's really powerful for public records requests. People can go in and find the information themselves, which is great. Next slide, please. We're expanding our functionality with the Open Gov platform by going live in the next month with our first online budget book. We are, we are decommissioning that six hundred-page PDF document. And we're gonna, we're going live with a new, uh, very user-friendly, very intuitive online budget book. Uh, we are on, on target and on track to go live with that in the next month. So we're really excited about that, actually. Next slide, please. It's also important for council to be aware that staff do spend quite a lot of time on ensuring that the council agenda reports that go before you every week. Um, have complete and accurate and informative, um, details about financial and budget impacts to decisions that we ask you to make. So this is a, a small set of criteria that staff evaluate for every single council agenda report that goes before you. Including the dollar amount, the funding sources, the fiscal year or years, the estimated useful life of the asset that we might be asking, um, council to approve of. Any ongoing operational or maintenance costs, impacts on reserves, if that's applicable. So we take, we spend a lot of time doing this because we really do pride ourselves and provide the information to council for every decision that we ask you to make. Next slide, please. We're also very proud of our budget process. We have a very transparent, very accountable, um, a very professional budget process. And it goes beyond just the people in this room. Many, many staff in each of the departments spend hours analyzing data, um, meeting deadlines, complying with information requests, filling out templates. There is a great deal of staff work that goes into producing the budget every year. And we have been able to receive a distinguished budget award for multiple years, um, because of that. We, we also have been making lots of improvements over the years with doing more long-range financial planning. And the implementation of the online budget book is another step in that same direction. So, next slide, please. Now I'll spend a little bit of time just talking about the major fund types that we have, uh, in the city and the departments that fall under them. Next slide, please. So first and foremost, our, our largest fund is the city's general fund. It is truly our primary operating fund for most, uh, government services. Really, some, some cities in California only have a general fund. Um, it's used to really account for services that have a general benefit. And for us here in Santa Barbara, a majority of our general fund dollars go to the public safety function, that, the functions of police and fire. It's primarily funded through taxes, so property tax, sales tax, transient occupancy tax. We'll go into each one of those in a little bit of detail today. It accounts for services that aren't primarily funded through other funding sources. So for example, a rate payer might pay a water bill that funds the water enterprise. Uh, there isn't a similar situation like that in the general fund. So general fund services are primarily funded through taxes. There is a, a pretty strong reserve requirement on the general fund. Fifteen percent of annual operating expenditures are to be held for, in case of a disaster. And then ten percent on top of that should be held in, in case of any contingency that might happen. And we have had to dip into our reserves in recent years for lots of different reasons, and we'll go into that a little bit later as well. Next slide, please. The next major type of funds. Go to the next slide, please. Are enterprise funds. These funds operate primarily like a business. They have to operate solely on their own. They have to generate adequate revenue to cover their ongoing operating and their capital expenditures as well. These examples of this are water and wastewater and our new clean energy program. Uh, the revenues that are generated in those operations are restricted. They can only be used to, 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 to operate and to implement capital for those particular uses. So for example, you can't use water revenue to pay for a police officer on the street. That's an, it's an illegal use of those funds. So we have to have really specific structures in place that control for that. There's also a twenty-five percent reserve target for most of the enterprises. And some enterprises have, um, uh, reserve targets beyond that for the enterprises that have a very heavy, uh, capital intensive program. Next slide, please. The next set of funds are called internal service funds. And these are funds that provide a service to the other city departments. So an example of that is our fleet, uh, division or our facilities, um, division. The, the, the staff in those divisions provide a service to all city departments. And so they generate revenue from departments paying them to support those services across the board. That model was used in many different cities and it's, it's been proven to be a very efficient model, but it does come with some challenges with just tracking actual costs versus allocated costs, which is more of a plan. So there are some inherent challenges with that model. Internal service funds have a ten percent reserve requirement as well. Next slide, please. The final major, um, type of funds are called special revenue funds. And these are funds that are set up for, primarily for grants, where the city might receive funding for a very specific purpose. So if we get a grant to restore, uh, a creek or to, to provide some housing or homeless services from a state agency. We would deposit that money in a special revenue grant so that we have the, the, the highest amount of control possible to make sure that we're using that money for the intended use. Next slide, please. So now I'm gonna go over each of the major enterprise funds just in a little bit of detail. And then after this section, um, we'll pause for a short break and be able to do some Q and A. So next slide, please. We'll go ahead and start with the airport. So the airport, uh, is one of our largest enterprise funds. It's funded primarily through lease revenue and grants that we, that we receive from the Federal Aviation Administration. There's been pretty strong revenue growth, um, from commercial and general aviation in recent years. Um, there has been a, a need to adjust staffing levels, uh, to meet operational areas for increased demands of the airport. Next slide, please. The slide on this graph shows, uh, the pie chart on the left, the breakdown of the major revenues that the airport is able to achieve. Primarily coming from commercial aviation, from landing fees, fuel mileage fees, other fees. Uh, there's a, a great deal of, uh, revenue coming from just general aviation and then off airfield properties from the, the many leases that the airport, um, property has. Next slide, please. This slide shows two graphs, and I have this graph prepared for all of the enterprises so that we can look at them consistently. The graph on the left shows the five-year trend of the revenues and expenditures in the enterprise operations. And the graph on the right shows the trend of their reserves compared to their reserve policy targets. I want to talk to each one of these at a very high level so that we can have a sort of a baseline understanding of the fiscal health of each of the enterprises. On the left-hand graph, where there's a green revenue line above the, the red expenditure line, that shows that they're operating in a little bit of a surplus. Um, if it's flipped, that means they're operating in a deficit. And so even during COVID, the airport was able to achieve a little bit higher revenues and expenditures over the years. It's important to note that the airport did receive a number of, of federal grants to address the, the, um, the lower air, air traffic, uh, passengers, uh, because of COVID. And so that was able to help them sustain operations into the current fiscal year. And the graph on the right, you can see that they have been able to achieve additional reserves over the past couple of years. Again, those reserves will be used for some capital investment in the coming years. It's important that these enterprises, uh, achieve a level of reserves that they can use to reinvest into their operation. Next slide, please. So now we'll talk about the water fund. The water fund is another major enterprise fund, and it has a very significant capital, uh, investment program. Including the water main replacement program, the advanced metering infrastructure project that is currently underway, and the Kater water treatment plant, uh, investment. They've been able to achieve reserves above policy target in recent years, which is great. And they do have planned rate increases for utility payers, um, coming up here over the next three years, which will be coming before our finance committee shortly. And there is this ramping up for drought conditions, some increased spending to address drought-related capital, uh, investments. Next slide, please. Similar to the airport that we just showed earlier, they have been able to achieve, um, some modest surpluses in recent years, which is great. But as you can see, because of some one-time, um, capital investments, those reserves have been, have been dipped into over the past couple of years. And now those, those reserves are ramping up a little bit again, uh, to get ready for the next, uh, round of capital investment for their infrastructure. Next slide, please. Moving on to the wastewater fund, it operates very similarly to the water funds. Again, a very capital investment intensive program. Some of the major capital investments are listed here on, on this slide. We'll go into them in any detail. But again, similar to water, it's really important that these enterprises, uh, revisit their rate structure on an annual basis. Because the cost of continuing to operate a very capital-intensive, um, enterprise is significant. And so there are annual revenue, um, increases being proposed in wastewater at around seven percent. Uh, the major drivers again are capital, uh, and addressing costs or, uh, inflation. Next slide, please. Wastewater's been able to maintain some consistency with their, their revenues exceeding their expenditures. They don't have, uh, as many, as much, uh, reserves as the, as the water fund, unfortunately. But their reserves are still, are still strong. Uh, but it's important that they are able to focus on the rates so that they can generate additional capital, um, to make investments in their infrastructure. Next slide, please. So the solid waste fund. The focus on this fund is going to be climate resiliency, uh, neighborhood vibrancy with encampment management, illegal dumping and other initiatives. As well as service accountability. So, uh, as we mentioned, getting ready for the next refuse contract. Next slide, please. The solid waste fund is another major enterprise fund. It has about a thirty-three million dollar annual operating, um, budget. Eighty percent of those funds, though, are dedicated to long-term contracts for trash collection, processing and disposal. Priorities for the, for the upcoming fiscal year, including, as I mentioned earlier, getting ready for the next agreement. As well as expanding the clean SB and encampment cleanup programs and implementing the new SB thirteen eighty-three, which is the food recovery, uh, requirements. Next slide, please. Again, the, the revenue, uh, is generated based on rates for, for garbage. And so it's, it's, there's a very close revenue and expenditure relationship as a majority of those revenues are paid out to the, to that one single contract. Um, so you can see their reserves are ticking up a little bit in the upcoming fiscal, in, in this current fiscal year, um, which is great to see. Next slide, please. Up next, the downtown parking fund. So downtown parking maintains and operates five parking structures in ten surface lots. They're also responsible for maintenance on State Street. Uh, and they have a long-term funding challenge. Downtown parking was hit particularly hard due to COVID. And they are still, um, struggling to, to achieve some level of sustainability. The pie chart on the right shows the proportion of the revenues, most of it coming from hourly parking. Next slide, please. Revenues, as I mentioned earlier, have been unstable during COVID. Uh, there had been a, a, a much lower demand for hourly parking and other parking in all, pretty much all of our parking lots and garages. Um, the reserves have been used significantly over the past five years, and they are currently below their policy target, which I'll show you next. There has been a great deal of focus with downtown parking and many other staff to figure out how we can achieve fiscal sustainability with this enterprise. Which includes potentially raising the hourly parking rates, reducing the complimentary period or expanding self-service hours. So those are some options that have been on the table and are currently being discussed. Next slide, please. The graph on the right shows the, the revenues unfortunately being below their expenditures over the past five years. And every year where that occurs, they've had to dip into their reserves, as you can see on the graph on the far right. So they had, uh, somewhat of a healthy reserve back in two thousand eighteen, but they have been gradually depleting those reserves. And are projected to be below the, the reserve policy target, um, by the end of this fiscal year. The staff, as I mentioned earlier, has been working on this and will be proposing some upcoming changes, um, during the budget process with the city council. Next slide, please. The golf fund, however, has been doing really well during COVID. A lot of people have been playing golf because it's a safe outdoor activity. Uh, it's a, it's a small enterprise, just over three million dollars annually, most of it coming from rent fees. Uh, there are some challenges in the golf course, though. There's some aging infrastructure and there really isn't enough capital, enough resources in the enterprise fund to make a lot of great progress on addressing those capital needs. But hopefully with the reserves ramping up, we'll be able to do so in the coming years. Next slide, please. You can see on the graph on the left how the revenues really came in strong during fiscal year twenty and fiscal year twenty-one. And that resulted in, in the golf enterprise really coming out from below policy reserve targets to, um, to being higher than policy reserves in fiscal year twenty-one. And then being projected to even grow even further in fiscal year twenty-two. And again, working with, with Jill and her team, figuring out how to go ahead and use these resources to implement some capital improvements. Will be the next step. Next slide, please. And then the waterfront fund. The waterfront revenues on the pie chart on the left see that they do have a, a wide variety of revenues coming in, primarily from parking fees. The leases that are held on, on waterfront property and slip rentals. Waterfront operations include facilities, harbor operations and then business services. Next slide, please. The waterfront fund has these near-term strategic goals with post-COVID recovery. Uh, the waterfront, just like downtown parking, was hit pretty significantly during COVID. There was a lot less tourist activity at the waterfront and many of the leaseholders were unable to, to stay current with their lease payments with the city. Uh, the other initiatives include continuing with their capital improvement programs and then funding their reserves at policy targets. And then you can see some of their long-term goals include sea level rise and mariner replacements. Next slide, please. The graph on the left does show the impact from COVID, how their revenue declined in fiscal year twenty, uh, and actually fiscal year nineteen as well. And so they were, they were operating in the red for a period of time. But as you can see in fiscal year twenty-one, the waterfront did rebound, where they worked really closely with all of the leaseholders to get them current on their leases. And I think most of them, if not all of them, if I'm not wrong, Mr. Wilchey, they are now current on their lease payments, which is great to see. So there's a bit of a timing issue with their revenues coming in, but really associated with prior year, um, contractual obligations. Their reserves are starting to rebound as well, again, looking into using some of those reserves for some capital investment. Next slide, please. And then our newest enterprise, our Santa Barbara Clean Energy Program. So it's a critical tool for achieving carbon neutrality. And it really is a really great program to achieve carbon-free electricity for a majority of the community. That provides local control and this program went live for residential customers back in October. And it just went live with all other customers this month. Next slide, please. The Clean Energy Fund, uh, we just have a couple of years of history because it is so new. Uh, it'll be around a thirty million dollar enterprise as it's, as it's rolling. Uh, most of that money, similar to the solid waste program, will be used for power, uh, supply, uh, for just agreements. The priorities in fiscal year twenty-three are to sort of move beyond the infancy stage of this enterprise to achieve some level of ongoing operation. To become self-sustaining, to build a level of reserves so that they can expand and provide a good, a great deal of customer, uh, programs that really benefit the community. that really benefit the community. Next slide, please. Okay, so I think this is a good time to take a break. Kind of went through the major fund structures of the city and then we touched very high level on all of the major enterprises. Questions from the council members?
I have a couple. So I'll start off with the downtown parking. We're in the process with the committee of looking at rates and everything, but right now with the revenue not matching the expenditures, what is the, the backstop for downtown parking? What would fill that in if they don't match? Is there objection on, I mean, answer general fund, but how much? And is there an expectation that that will come from the general fund?
Councilmember Freeman, so if, if there were no changes structurally to the enterprise, if we didn't raise rates or we didn't look at reducing expenditures significantly, the downtown parking fund is scheduled to dip below policy reserves by the end of this fiscal year. And if we continue with that approach in the next fiscal year, they will be, they will have negative cash. And so what happens in that situation is the general fund picks up, picks up the tab, will pick up the difference.
And do we have any estimate, estimates? Again, just basically revenue currently, how are there discussions about it? That it would, how much would that be that we have an estimate for next fiscal year?
Councilmember, I don't have an estimate on that. I do believe it's, if I can give you a range, it's probably somewhere between $500,000 to $1 million.
We can add to that any change.
Correct.
And then for parks, is that, I have a question on our take apart. So that was one of the priorities that you listed. Where are we with, or take apart, I know we didn't pick the grant, so kind of where are we with moving that project forward? And what, what is the estimated cost in phase one of this?
So, Ira, Councilmember Freeman, we are currently working with a design consultant to do the final science construction documents, which will get us closer to understanding phase of construction and cost of construction. As part of that, we'll be looking at the feasibility of phasing the project and how to go about it. So we anticipate being at ABR by the end of June or July for final design. And then maybe back to consult or authorization in the form of these two construction documents. Right now, we don't anticipate the estimate cost of changing anything as time goes by. The potential increase, but we are also, we're very aware of how we might go about trying to go out of base that project, which we'll know more hopefully by next spring.
Thank you. And then for now, my last question is, so before the solid waste funds of sustainability for, for encampments, how much are we putting towards that? And then where does that, what fund, which, where does it, is it general fund or is it your enterprise fund? So just trying to, and what are we doing in terms of?
Yeah, so currently those are funded at about $100,000. We're asking to increase that to 500,000 in the next fiscal year. That comes to rates, so it's rate-based, not general fund. And it will allow us to be more proactive with the encampment. Currently, we'll be very reactive as they're called in. We're convening our contractors to clean up the site. So we'll be able to do actual act receipts, address problems before they're, they're in a blow under proportion.
So we're posing 500,000 this year for that?
And present.
Thank you.
Ms. Snell?
Thank you. So this is the first question I have about downtown parking. And why isn't it an enterprise fund? And where do their funds go if you're not self-sustaining or having?
Councilmember Snell, just to clarify, the downtown parking fund is enterprise fund? It is. So it is, is, it is designed to be self-sustaining. But if there aren't adequate revenues to cover the expenditures, the general fund is left with its sustaining. Assuming that they're, that they're dipping into and have depleted all of their reserves, which is what they're projected to do next fiscal year.
Thank you. I think I heard you say it was.
It's operated as a enterprise fund. It doesn't have the same restrictions on the use of money as our other enterprise funds. So you could theoretically use those funds for any expense you wanted. But we do not have, have not had that practice.
Okay, so it is an enterprise fund, but it has different restrictions than others. And why, but why is that? Why was it set up that way?
Councilmember Snell, it's, uh, there's, there's more discretion for the city council to, to, to address sort of parking-related services. Whereas it's different than utilities like water or wastewater. Those are very specific, you know, sort of core functions, right? Not every city has a parking garage, for example. So we have some discretion about how we implement our parking services.
And where do the funds go? Is it strictly just to parking structures and staff? Or do those funds go into general?
So I just want to clarify, we didn't set it up in that manner. There's the rules that just established what has to be used strictly as an enterprise are set at the state level. We operate it as, as an enterprise. The funds go to support the maintenance and operation of the lots. But they are also used to support related activities. The lots were established to support the downtown for, for its customers and workers, for the people working in the downtown. So we use some of the revenues for that. For, for example, our, our maintenance program on State Street. Some of it is for the ambassador program, although the general fund also contributes to the ambassador program. But it really, they are focused on the providing benefits both through provision of parking and through the provision of other ancillary services. Because the parking is in support of the businesses, the other ancillary services are in support of the businesses.
I'd add one thing, but some of the funds are limited by Prop 218, water, wastewater. Downtown parking is, since our Jack's case in the Supreme Court, limited by Prop 26. So now we have to make sure that our rental rates for those parking spaces are fair and reasonable in relation to their cost, but that it's an easier restriction than 218.
So I guess I'm wondering things like, since there are so many increased needs for cleanup or homeless issues, or the downtown ambassador may need to expand, expand that beyond just for businesses, but for, you know, residents, people going downtown. So I'm wondering if there's ways that some of those services that have fallen on downtown parking could be in, in other ways compensated for? Or is that just general fund?
General fund, okay.
But to answer, you just heard Ms. Arantxa say that, that we are going to use the solid waste fund to help address litter, which is inappropriate access and encampments throughout the city. So there, there will be some support throughout the city from that operation.
So is it safe to say aside from downtown parking, all the enterprise funds are in surplus mode?
Councilmember Snell, that is the case right now. But as you can see, some of the graphs did show like wastewater, a couple other ones did dip below their reserve policy targets. And again, for our enterprises that are very heavy, heavy on the capital, they're, they're very capital-intensive programs like water and wastewater. That's a natural occurrence to have really large capital investments. So there's a lot of sort of fluctuation with their reserves. That's natural to occur.
And they appear help.
They appear helping, yes.
I think that's, I think that's sort of counter to messaging. I mean, we have more budget to go through, but I think it's not exactly budget free fall for the enterprise funds. They seem to be self-sustaining as well in their reserves.
Councilmember Snell, I agree with that.
Thanks. And then for the, um, just for sea level rise funding, and I saw it in one department, but I realize it's going to touch multiple departments. And would it sort of our long-term goal of how to fund those types of things for all these departments? Not just water, but just?
Ms. Arantxa may want to answer that. And I would ask that you come closer to the microphone in case we have people trying to listen.
Thank you, Councilmember Snell. As you know, there's a lot of state funding, federal funding coming down the pipe for infrastructure improvements related to sea level rise and other climate adaptation measures. We just received yesterday that we've been awarded 2.2 million from the coastal commission. So that gets us started on our priority items right away. Additionally, this is a benefit of Santa Barbara energy. Ultimately, it can help pay for climate mitigation and adaptation measures. Probably not the whole front of the cost, but certainly helps diffuse that burden on the city. And then we'll continue to go after funding as it's available. The state has committed a lot of funding and all this budget surplus is moving forward.
Thank you. And then just, I just wanted to make sure I understood the department workflow priorities. So these are the top three priorities for departments or?
That's correct. They've been self-selected by the departments as their, what they consider their highest priorities. And sometimes there may be others that are very close behind that we just didn't improve.
And it would just be a time to ask about those. So just one that just comes up, apologize, is city attorney, the top priority being sign ordinance review committee? Are there not other top priorities?
The departments are top priorities. So you saw dozens of projects involving the other departments that we need to support. Sign ordinance review committee was a task I undertook beginning in 20, late 2015. It stalled when the committee couldn't reach consensus. I've committed to the sign committee, Tommy of them all, to push that ahead this year. It's an area where the First Amendment has gotten ahead of our ordinance and it's really the only independent legal objective that I think needs to be on the list.
So, so you said departments would be the top priorities, which feel like communications with the department? Like I'm just trying to.
No, I mean that, take for example, the FBI operations at the airport. We're using some outside counsel there, but we're also contributing quite good support. Ms. Connects here and has worked heavily with waterfront on their priorities. So really it's a reflection of us being a support department.
It'd be great to ever say that. Just visually, it looks like that's an awful lot of priorities.
Thank you. And, and incidentally, it shouldn't count aside other priorities. That's fine. Mr. Jordan?
So we look at the sheets with the reserves, everything looks really, really good except for parking. So I'm assuming on all those reserves that are skyrocketing past targets or requirements, those are spoken, there are spoken for. Does that discussion come later in the budget process? It's not just painting a picture of people that in some cases have all the targeted reserves they have. Though there are obligations to those reserves, so to speak, right?
Councilmember Jordan, that's correct. And in your departmental budget workshops, you will see financial plans that explain how those reserves are needed to meet future capital needs.
And then I had kind of the same question on sea level rise. Because it, when you look, it's again, it don't, it didn't appear in waterfront, airport, or either the waterfront. It appeared in sustainability. So it's kind of our, is our, is our strategy, kind of big picture, that the sustainability or the city front for that runs through the process. Comes up short a decade or two decades, or three decades from that point. Then we go back and we expense against the departments that did it rather, rather than when the money's potentially in hand, right? Whatever, a million here, a million there at a time. We're not actually asking the departments that will be most highly affected to set that money aside early.
Very good question. So, and I, again, Ms. Arantxa can come up and talk about that. I do know the first priority is to start to do monitoring so that we can start to continue to plan for when we might think we need those monies, but.
Yeah, thank you, Councilmember Jordan. And I should have, I was remiss, I should have said the money that we receive from the coastal commission actually applies to projects throughout the city organization. So there's projects at the waterfront, the airport, the water utility study. So what we are doing is we are coordinating those efforts. We're helping support the departments who really are the experts in those infrastructure projects. Moving forward, some departments have actually started to set aside funds of waterfront and a water fund. Have put a little bit of a CIP allocation each year to make sure that they're staying up to speed with the high priority items identified in the plan. Currently, we've been successful in funding the top priorities in the plan to work forward and keep pursuing that plan per se. If we get to a point where sea level rise is happening much faster than anticipated, then yes, we have to revisit.
So when you say you get, you get $2 million and half a million goes to a project, a high priority project in waterfront, does waterfront eventually end up getting expensed for that? Or is it just a city general expense?
Councilman Jordan, they are grant funds and so they are not to be reimbursed to the state.
To the city.
To the coastal commission. We will receive funds from the coastal commission and spend them.
I didn't explain that well. So you're gonna take money from the coastal commission, you're gonna do a project in the waterfront. The waterfront's not spending the money, the project's completed. Does that then become a burden for the waterfront to pay that back to the city? No, it just comes from somewhere else. We use it for somewhere else, it's not out there. And then you use the phrase as available. And so what happens if not enough is available for a high priority project that you get partially funded? Is the city's strategy, kind of goes back to my first question, is kind of the big picture strategy is then the city as an entity finds a way to go get it either on a general fund or obligations or something like that? And then does a, in the future then, does the department have to bear that burden? And are, so I guess when I look at, when I see those lines going like this on reserves, I'm just wondering why each one of those, those three I mentioned that are highly affected by sea level rise aren't already trying to squirrel away money for the potential of not as available, when as available doesn't become available. And then, then you're, you know, trying to earn future dollars is not as good as the dollars in hand right now. Does that make sense?
Absolutely. And that can continue to be a strategy. And again, as I mentioned, I think with the waterfront, the waterfront here, they are currently doing that and allocating dollars annually. We do not have a strategy to build a specific reserve for climate adaptation and possibly that's something we can look at. We are not currently worried about funds growing up. Not only are there the grant funds, there's also state revolving funds and other low interest capital that we can access and need.
So I'll see more of that as we grow it, right?
Absolutely.
Thanks. And RL, I just wanted clarification on support to departments. I'll just use two examples that are sitting in my pocket. And that's short-term vacation rental ordinance in the coastal zone and enforcement of short-term vacation rental illegal properties inland. So, so those aren't on your list, but those are, so I'm trying to make sure I understand. Those would be originated out of a separate department where then you would play a role? Is that the way that process works?
Yes, but I think in, in the instance of enforcement, that falls more into what Ms. Bjork described as, I think the underlying part of the iceberg. Those are ongoing functions that happen. If council wished to highlight or increase enforcement, we can call it out separately. I, I, I wanted to add one thing. One of the wonderful things this year under Ms. Bjork and Mr. DiMartini's leadership is that we were able to meet with all the, all the departments when we were preparing the budget. So this isn't the first time I've seen those priorities. And we've allocated what I hope is sufficient staffing so that the departments can get their jobs done without a state barrier. That's the best I can do as an assisted support department.
Thanks. Thanks.
Mr. Goodt, any questions or? Couple of things on the special revenue funds. Are there any reserve, policy reserves associated with, for example, measure B?
So, I remember there are no, there may be specific reserve requirements for a particular grant. For example, that might be a restriction from the granting agency, for example. But for the fund as a whole, there are no government structured reserve limits.
In some cases, measure B is like a super funded fund, but it's one thing that's going on in search of other grants. They don't have policy reserve required.
That's, that's correct.
And then my second question was, you made it mention about public records actually being self-accessible. And then my second question was, you made it mention about public records actually being self-accessible or self-serve. Is that just in the accounting firm? Because I know in some cases we need to read actives on public record. Is that different? I'm just kind of curious on that word.
Well, let me start with a lot, but what Mr. DiMartini was referring to is the public records act encourages now encourages and allows us to point people to publicly accessible electronic portals. So they can still compel us to go through paper, but if we have it electronic, we are to offer it to them and try and make it easy.
All right. So it'd be a special request that you do something that was redacted versus what we have.
Correct. And you wouldn't put out consumption data that needs to be redacted.
I agree. Mr. Freeman.
About one follow-up question. So it's kind of along the lines of steel rise planning, but it gets to State Street master planning. So eventually, we're going to have some recommendations from the committee that are going to require significant probably significant capital investment. How are we planning for that process? And what funds are available? Because I'm like coastal commission, I don't think there's going to be as as much statewide funds or something like that.
So we we are conceptually thinking that we would approach that like we did approach the development of the downtown parking district at the time that was formed in terms of doing a joint public-private partnership to have joint funding. That is dependent on the private part being what willing to join in in that public-private partnership and help fund. Short of that, you've got your your general capital fund, general fund capital fund, both measure C and your regular general fund capital available, but there are no other special funds available for that. So what we do on State Street will be will be very much constrained by available revenues.
So in the future, it's highly likely the general fund of measure C would be the primary source. Even if we partnered with the the businesses, we would still need to contribute significantly. We don't have anything that we're setting aside right now as a pop to start building.
I think we're a little preliminary in the conversation to have a very solid answer for that, but yes, that is correct. We're not planning currently, we are not currently saving measure C revenues to address state sheet. I, as you are well aware, we have a number of deferred maintenance issues at facilities across the city that we need to address, some of which cause increased costs the longer we leave them in place. So trying to use that money, we will we will, but part of the state sheet work is coming up with a funding strategy to be able to be successful on that project.
I just like to add that there are other, this was brought up, that there are other areas of town that also need attention, other business districts too. So the like, just to clarify, there there isn't any funding for those that don't want this time either. They're kind of all on the same boat of State Street. And so if we wanted to do State Street and these other areas, we'd have.
I one quick reminder, Councilmember Freeman, in connection with coastal road, council created the community benefit district ordinance. And as I recall, you took special pains to make sure that could be used all over the city.
So if we wanted to look at those other areas, we would need to start working with community groups in those areas to try to implement something similar.
That's correct, Councilmember Freeman. The there is, we have had a practice in anticipating that same practice this year of allocating 500,000 in measure C capital to support business districts, business areas, business quarters, I think we call it. We, during the pandemic, the majority of that went to supporting State Street and cleaning and things like that, improving lighting. But there that can be used in business quarters around the city. And we have in the past used some of that money to support other business quarters, but really focused on basic maintenance.
Any other questions from council? If not, we can leave.
Let's talk insurance. Next slide, please. So the city is self-insured, and the self-insurance fund is one of our internal service funds as far as the fund types. And this model works for us because we're able to reduce our operating costs for procuring insurance because of this model. We have a self-insurance fund, which is funded through operating revenues from departments. We have adequate funds in there for known or planned expenses, such as our annual insurance premiums that we pay for general liability, property insurance, aircraft insurance, a number of other specific insurance plans. And then we also pay a number of claims to the city out of our self-insurance fund. Next slide, please. This slide here shows what the current fiscal year's allocations into the self-insurance fund are from each of the departments in the city. In total, it's just under $10 million that goes into the self-insurance fund, primarily coming from general fund departments such as police and fire. But again, you can see on the left-hand side that every fund is responsible for a pretty sizable portion of the city's insurance programs. Next slide, please. You go back a slide, please. This slide here shows what the claims have, the claims trend have been over the past 11 years. And the red line shows what the appropriations are, so what the actual budget plan amount of money coming into the self-insurance fund from departments are planned to be. And the the gray and the blue columns show what the actual claim expenses have been. And as you can see, in most of these years, the actual claims that we've had to pay out some of some sometimes far exceed the actual budget for appropriations in that given year. And as you can see over the past two years, we've had to come back to the city council to request additional funding, primarily from the general fund to come into the self-insurance fund to play to pay for additional claims. So we just don't have a sustainable funded self-insurance model to continue to operate the way that we are. Next slide, please. Also, there's been quite a lot of change in the insurance industry. We've talked about climate conditions, the extended drought in the Western United States. There's storms on the liability side. Law enforcement claims have been much farther reaching and much higher escalating value of jury verdicts. There's a number of reasons why the insurance industry has changed the way that it has, and ultimately that increases our cost to procure our insurance plans. Next slide, please. So we we decided to tackle this issue at a staff level this current year, and we brought it before the finance committee just a few months ago, and we brought forth options about how we can achieve some sustainability in our self-insurance fund over the next nine years. And we got conceptual agreement from the finance committee to go ahead and plan for that. And what that will mean is gradually increasing allocations from all the departments into the self-insurance fund over the next nine years so that our actual reserve level meets our actuarial recommended level. Our actuary recommends that we should have about $18 million in the self-insurance fund. We only have about eight. So the plan is to get up to that point over the next nine years. Next slide, please. Now let's spend the next chunk of the afternoon on the general fund. And we'll really start with the revenues, but before diving into it, I just want to kind of lay the groundwork, set the stage as to some of the factors really impacting our general fund at all levels. Next slide, please. So you've seen this pie chart before. The left pie chart is our revenues. The right pie chart is our expenditures. On the revenue side, most of our general fund revenues come from property tax, sales tax, and transient occupancy tax. But again, you can see that there's other revenue sources as well. We're going to go into each one of these just in a little bit of detail to understand what some of the trends are. On the right, as I mentioned earlier, the majority of our general fund is allocated toward public safety, police and fire, as well as community services, such as parks and recreation and the library and community development and a number of other functions. Next slide, please. Again, general fund taxes make up about two-thirds of the total revenues in the general fund. The other revenues come in from departmental revenues like fees and permit charges. Our general fund is rather volatile, our revenue sources. Unfortunately, we live in a tourist-based economy here, and so when there are peaks and valleys of tourist economic activity, our sales tax, our TOT, other revenues do fluctuate with that activity, especially during times of recession. Back in 2001, 2002, you can see it pretty clearly that our revenues did decline during those years. They declined again during the Great Recession in 2008, 2009. Subsequently, we did have to strategically dip into our reserves as a city to be able to continue to provide the services that the public expects of us. Next slide, please. It took about seven years to fully restore our reserves after the Great Recession in 2008, 2009. The city took, made a commitment to do that over that period of time. And that was very challenging, right, to minimize the impacts on the city. In the current fiscal year and fiscal years following COVID, we did experience quite a lot of decline in TOT, sales tax, and other departmental revenues. The city buildings were closed, such as the library. That resulted in less user fees that were paid to the city as well. We did need to utilize our reserves for a couple of years because of that. And so it's, we've been thinking about sort of the rethinking of how we deliver services to the public, right? This is not a sustainable model to be operating in. And so staff has been really critically thinking about that in in preparation for this upcoming budget cycle in cycles to come. Next slide, please. So again, there's still uncertainty in the economy, but things have definitely gotten better. TOT have rebounded, sales tax have rebounded. Things have definitely improved, but we're learning from our history. Things are cyclical. There is uncertainty, so we want to plan for that. We know that our pension costs are increasing very substantially. There is a known cost, you have to pay for it. But there's things that we can do to reduce those costs or reduce the liabilities in due time. There's also the potential to generate additional revenue, both on taxes and on other departmental types of services. But it's important that we control our costs and identify efficiencies wherever we can. So those are just some things that we've been really thinking about critically in preparation for this meeting and also for just the upcoming budget cycle. Next slide, please. Talk just briefly on the American Investment Plan Act. We talked about this in great detail on Tuesday, the city council meeting. The city has outlets allocated $21.8 million from the ARPA legislation. We've been able to use that funding for all these different purposes listed here on this slide. Next slide, please. Back in June of last year, city council directed that the first tranche of $10.9 million be used to partially offset the revenue that we lost in the general fund that allowed us to sustain our operation in the general fund, to continue to provide services without cutting costs any further. On Tuesday of this week, council took action to continue to invest back in our general fund modestly to replace some revenue that was lost, replace $1.5 billion of revenue that was lost in the downtown parking fund, and then allocate $8.4 million to a variety of different services and other costs that we've already been incurred, that we've already incurred directly related to COVID. The ARPA legislation definitely helped us out financially. So this is the summary of that. Next slide, please. And next slide, please. Now we're going to go into the major, the major revenues in our general fund. I'll provide you just a brief overview of what they are and what the trends have been, and then after this section, we'll take another break. First, let's talk about property tax. Property tax is our largest revenue source in the general fund, and it's administered by the county. Prop 13, that was passed in 1978, significantly limited the amount of property tax that can be generated. It's based on 1% of your assessed valuation, and it can only go up by a maximum of 2% annually based on CPI. There are some exceptions for property tax calculations, which we won't go into today. It's important to note that the city only receives 13% of property tax dollars. The majority of property tax goes to schools. Next slide, please. Okay, so let's say you buy a house that's worth a million dollars here in Santa Barbara. I'm sure it's probably way more than that now, right? The annual property tax amount is 1% of that, so you would pay $10,000 annually. What comes to the city of Santa Barbara is only 13% of that. So it's $1,300 of that $10,000 payment comes to the city. We got most of it in December and then another chunk back in April. Next slide, please. This slide here shows a really healthy growth trend of our property tax dollars. Wasn't really deterred during COVID. Actually, it strengthened a little bit. It is projected to continue to grow, but not at the same sort of rapid level that we saw over the past year or two. So nice, healthy growth chart here. Next slide, please. We've got a sales tax. Majority of our sales tax revenue comes from the sort of state legislated broadly burn sales and use tax, which is basically charged on the sale of merchandise in and around Santa Barbara. It's administered by the state, and so businesses collect sales tax when we purchase. They send that money to the state, and then the state will redistribute it back out to all the municipalities that get their money. The effective sales tax rate in Santa Barbara is 8.75%. We also passed measure C back in 2017, which is a general purpose tax, district sales tax, and that's 1%. So of the 8.75%, the city actually receives a total of 2%. That's what comes directly to the city. Next slide, please. This slide here, the main takeaway on this graph is to to show you that there that the volatility of sales tax revenue in Santa Barbara is greater than what is seen countywide and what is seen statewide. So our highs are higher and our lows are lower. That's what this graph is really showing you. And so there is a lot more sort of variability, a lot more sort of risk associated with our sales tax revenues. There's been a great deal of shift in consumer spending as of late with COVID, a lot more online retail activity, a lot less brick and mortar, sort of more typical retail activities such as on State Street. Next slide, please. Which is another kind of simple example. If I go to Big Five and buy a baseball bat and a glove for my daughter, and I spend $75, I'm going to, I'm going to pay $6.56 of sales tax when I make that purchase. On the right-hand side, you can see that a majority of that goes to the state. Sales tax is the largest revenue source with the state of California. Counties and districts get a little bit as well, and then what comes to the city of Santa Barbara of that particular purchase is $1.50. This is a simple example on sales tax. Next slide, please. Sales tax is strong for us. We can get a lot of sales tax revenue in the general fund, but there's some volatility here, as you can see on this graph. It remained pretty stable, goes up, came down during COVID, and now has gone back up. Next slide, please. Transient occupancy tax is another large revenue source for the general fund. We have over 60 hotels here in Santa Barbara. And the guests who stay there, the transients, are the ones that pay the tax to the hotels. The hotels then turn around and remit that that tax directly to the city. The sales tax rate in Santa Barbara is 12%. 10, 10% of that 12% are general fund revenues, and there's a 2% set aside that's restricted for creeks restoration projects. Next slide, please. TOT is volatile, and it dropped significantly during COVID, immediately after COVID, both with occupancy and the average daily rates that hotels were charging in hotels, as you can see on this graph here. And then it went back up again and then came back down again in the winter months. And then following the winter months, it actually went back up and sort of April, May, June, July timeframe, hotels achieved a great occupancy rate and the average daily rate, sometimes exceeding $400 on average a night, were achieved in many of the hotels in Santa Barbara. Next slide, please. So with that, TOT has definitely rebounded, but as you can see in fiscal year 20 and fiscal year 21, it was significantly lower than what was realized in Paris. Next slide, please. UUT is our utility users tax. It's another tax that we have here in Santa Barbara. It's a general tax that's levy on residential and commercial services, primarily for utilities such as water, trash, electricity, gas, phone and cable. It's a 5.75% rate on telecommunications and then the which is measure G that was passed back in 2018. And I will say that Santa Barbara initiated a process with our audit firm to see if we are able to collect UUT on digital service providers such as Hulu and Netflix. That hasn't been done before, and we were one of the first cities to participate in that effort. So we'll see how that goes. Next slide, please. UUT is fairly stable. It does not grow very much. But as you can see on the far right, you can see the the major portion of our UUT revenue comes from electricity and water. Next slide, please. Another revenue source in the general fund is cannabis. The city voters did approve of a new tax on cannabis back in 2016 and that allowed for imposing a tax up to 20% on businesses. We did adopt regulations and a really robust permitting program for all those businesses, and there are 12 of them licensed in Santa Barbara today. Next slide, please. Although voters approved of a tax up to 20%, we have implemented that program with tax rates below that that varies depending on the type of activity. So for storefront retail, it's 6%, for manufacturing and distribution and testing, it's 4%, so on and so forth. It is still a very young business in Santa Barbara. It is still a very young business in Santa Barbara and it has been growing and ramping up over the past couple of years. But we are experiencing or projected to see a little bit of a decline in the current fiscal year compared to last year. So it ranges just a little under two million dollars a year. Next slide, please. Business license taxes. We have about sixteen thousand registered business in the city. All of them are required to have a business license and have an annual renewal if they wish to continue to do business. The tax is based on their gross receipts. And most of the businesses in Santa Barbara are small, meaning they make less than about a million dollars a year. And those businesses will only pay a couple hundred dollars a year to have their business license. Next slide, please. Business license tax does not generate a significant amount of revenue for the city. The municipal code is rather outdated and this is an opportunity for us to look at in the future. It also does not grow much. It's, it actually declined a little bit during COVID and is projected to stay relatively flat. Next slide, please. And finally, there are many other revenue sources in the general fund. You want to register your child for a, a park recreation program or you need to pay a fee for the police department. There's lots of other things that go into the general fund, most of which are a little bit smaller than the ones I mentioned earlier. Next slide, please. It's important to note that I think one of my core responsibilities as a finance director, and I think we all share this responsibility, is that also speak for myself, it's really important that we maximize our revenues from our existing revenue sources. And there's things that we should do, that we, that we do currently, and there's other things that we can do to ensure this. One thing that, that I'm responsible for is auditing our revenue sources. We have a robust revenue audit program for our sales tax, business license tax and our UUT. We would like to ramp up an audit program on our TOT revenue and our cannabis revenues as well. As I mentioned earlier, our business license municipal code is outdated. There's an opportunity there to update it, which may require voter approval, but there's an opportunity there. Our effective tax rate on cannabis is lower than what is authorized by the voters. There's an opportunity there. Every year, we work with departments on ensuring cost recovery for all the services that we provide, some of which are subsidized by the general fund, some of which are not. That's really, it's a really important, critical part of our annual budget cycle that we're at least recovering our cost to provide services to the public. There's a lot, there's a lot to do here to maintain our revenues and to ensure that we're maximizing what we should be getting. So just want to put that out there. Next slide, please. So before I jump into expenditures, maybe I'll pause. It's like an opportunity for another round of questions, please. Question, councilman, Ms. Herman, you have a question here?
I have a few questions. When you say update the business licensing, what does that mean exactly?
Councilmember, here is, that means that we could look at different types of categories of businesses for the, for what they are for applying for this license, as well as the actual tax rate.
When it came to the UUT revenues, does the internet follow the telecommunications at the five point seven five rate? So do you know how much it increased during the pandemic?
Councilmember, here is, we did monitor, I will say first, staff initially thought that our UUT revenues would go up rather than during, during COVID because of a lot more. But what staff found was that UUT revenue did not really change that much. So it did not seem to increase substantially during COVID.
For us as a government body?
For the, for the revenue that we received from the UUT tax, the UUT tax payments from the utility providers, that amount that we received did not increase substantially.
So that tax came from every internet user?
Yes, so, councilmember, here is, every individual that has internet service or pays a cell phone bill, when they pay their bill, the UUT is remitted to the utility provider, like the UUT to your writers. They then turn around and let the tax to the city.
The reason I asked is when I met with Cox and I asked him how much money they, how much increase they did during the pandemic, they refused to answer because it was private company. So I just wondered if maybe you had an idea of what that was. Which one?
I mean, that's right, but.
Oh, I was just telling, I was just saying that when I met with Cox and I asked him how much more of an increase they made off of our residents during the pandemic, they refused to answer because they're a, a private company.
Councilmember, here is, one, one of the things that may be a little confusing is that the it's not a usage tax on how much internet.
That's it.
Ms. Herman.
Just a couple of quick questions, thanks, on TOT. First, did you know approximately, I mean, I guess it's hard to say it goes up and down, but how much would be the two percent allocation to Creeks? And then, do we have to go through a voting process if, for example, we wanted to increase that twelve percent or to maybe allocate another two percent to a different fund or use, for example? How would that be? I would just a little bit about that.
So councilmember, Harmon, the, the twelve percent TOT that's paid by, by, by the, two percent of the twelve percent goes to Creeks. So that's approximately sixteen or seventeen percent of the total amount of TOT remitted goes to Creeks. If the council wanted to increase, to looking at increasing the TOT rate, that does require voter approval.
And then what about allocating another or a different two percent to some other use rather than to the general fund? That also require voter approval?
Councilmember, Harmon, that does not. So for example, if council wanted to allocate two percent of the, ten percent of the general fund to a specific use, you have the authority of doing that.
Thank you.
Other questions?
Mine similar to Ms. Herman. About the cannabis, I know it's a fairly new business, but I would like to see a percentage of either the TOT or this, the cannabis fund to, to go to parks or recs. Just because maybe COVID highlighted how needed the parks are and how much they provide for it.
Well, sort of cannabis is sure, we're on there. So why do we see there is a decline in cannabis? Is there any record date or any info on that?
Councilmember, I don't have any sort of industry insight on that, other than knowing that the volume of our revenue growth was pretty significant last fiscal year, mainly just with COVID consumption, you know, changes. And maybe that there's some sort of leveling off of industry that might be occurring this year.
There's definitely a glut right now. I know the county, the county.
Yeah.
I can tell you that fact. And we had this discussion at one point. Whenever it came up, when there was a transfer of the, of one business to another, there was a new sale. And did the city get any of that transfer? So yeah, the new business bought the old, bought the old one and it was for a really high price. We didn't need. Of that delta between what the original business paid and the new business came in?
No, but that's a good example of a place where the council could ask the voters to impose another general tax.
Yeah, I, I'd be interested in looking at, at that for what's on this, my back. Um, which kind of leads into my next question is what other areas are there? I, I know you stress the importance of maximizing our existing revenues, but that's not going to get us to where we need to be. Um, what other areas can we look at for new revenue generation? It's a loaded question, but just a couple of examples to start us off.
Okay. I guess I'll start by saying anytime a, a general tax revenue increase or something, it needs to be thoroughly evaluated. Like we give a measure C and we're here, but we've had an extensive outreach and communication process, sort of the pulling process to, to ensure some of all viability. I know that our business license tax rates are lower than, than more modern municipal codes. Our TOT rate of twelve percent is now lower than most cities across California. Many cities have increased that rate of fourteen percent, so there's an opportunity there. There's an opportunity to continue to look at fees. I think many of our fees are overly subsidized by the general fund. And that's a, that's to the discretion of the city council whether or not we want to completely do that. I mentioned our cannabis tax rate is up to twenty percent. We have authorization to go that high. Right now, they're being implemented lower. But again, there's a, sort of a sweet spot as to how high you want to increase that to when you then sort of entice behavior in, in ways that you might not want that to go. Some cities have development impact fees. We don't have that very much yet, but for Brian, that might be an opportunity as well.
There, there are quite a list of smaller fees and taxes that could be evaluated. Things like property transfer tax. We did a fairly exhaustive look at this a few years ago when we were looking at alternatives to support infrastructure maintenance and ultimately landed on the sales tax because it was the, it, it best matched our needs. But there are certainly a long list of potentials that we could revisit. And Mr. Dave Martin has spoken of, of a number of them, parcel tax, you know. They, but they almost, other than fees, they almost would require our voter approval.
Do you have that, that report that you can maybe send out to the council from a few years ago? Do we still have that or was it?
I will go look.
Just I want to see what the, what the, what we were looking at.
I will look through my old files. I should have it. I, I did try to keep all of those reports.
Yeah, I just want to know what, what was looked at, except that's a strike point for each of us to do. And then just a couple more questions. Uh, well, the big question I have is there's been a lot of Congress right now on this new funding package and whether or not it's going to impact our, I guess, our second tranche of ARPA. Uh, do we have any information on whether or not that ten point nine million that we just did on Tuesday is going to be taken away or refused?
Councilmember, Preben, I have, I have multiple staff monitoring that right now. We have no indication yet that council is going to pull that second tranche of ARPA away. Congress, Congress. When and if we, we find that out, we will make sure that we inform you immediately. In reading various news articles, it's like Speaker Disney has said that she does not want to impact local youth values, cities. We call that category, but we'll see. As we get closer to May, the time that we're supposed to receive our distribution, sort of the, the risk of them pulling away gets a little bit lower, so.
Thank you, that's, that's reassuring because I know there was a lot of talk about it the last few days since Tuesday on, on that. Um, what percentage of the, the general fund is staff compensation versus other expenditures?
Councilmember, Preben, so if, if you include measure C, the total amount of general fund, I believe it's around sixty to sixty five percent. If you don't include measure C, I think it's going to be around eighty percent. That's not right? Okay, that's about right.
Without measures.
Without measures.
And then ju- just for a note for future presentations, when we have the charts on the, the taxes, are, we have the, the the graphs here, if we could get the actual number on there, because to be, am I, is it twenty two or is it twenty three sometimes? So it's just helpful to have that.
Absolutely.
And then what is, and then what is the, the total general fund?
Okay. The, the total general fund budget in, in the current fiscal year is one hundred and sixty eight million dollars.
You have a projection for next year?
Next year, and we're going to do the slides here that the forecast is one hundred and eighty three million dollars.
And I, I did have a, I just want to clarify, it was something from a council meeting a couple of weeks back that you mentioned. The property tax, it said that the, the growth was, is a little lower than it's been or it's projected. It's still going to grow, but not as much as it has been. But you said something, it was actually, councilmember Jordan asked the question, was at the time, was that the, and it gets to pensions. And so maybe you can answer it when you get to the pensions part, but the, there is a growth in the pensions that we're going to pay in the property tax. And you said that the growth in the pensions is roughly similar to the growth in your property. Uh, can you speak to that either now or during the pensions, just that? Because I think it's an important point if the property tax is growing, but basically being accounted for. We should get where it is.
Sure.
And then Well, Ms. York, the last question I have in this term of costs is we have a lot of boards and commissions. And some of them are being consolidated or some of them are just not functioning anymore. Is there a cost in terms of expenditures that we have at the city where we maybe reduce some costs? I'm not talking about taking any of the big ones out, but some of the ones that are just not functioning anymore. So is there a way, give that a consideration?
Um, it, it, it was looked at some years ago. I think it would be timely to look at it again. Your boards and commissions do important work in informing you, advising you on, on issues. But they are staff intensive. They, they require a lot of staff time to develop and discuss and manage agendas, post-agendas, attend meetings. So that wouldn't reduce costs so much, but it might allow us to redirect those staff resources so we can operate more efficiently. And it's certainly something that the council wanted us to look at, we could consider.
And there's some that don't even need anymore.
There are a few that seem to be obsolete and we should, and, and those are not costing us anything because they are not meeting. But we should probably clean those out.
Okay, very good. Now, I'll remind council, this is our first kind of general guide and budget, so we'll get into granularity of all this.
I was actually wondering about that, if it was time for comments or just questions.
Well, let's get through the presentations first, if you may. If that's okay with you. So.
I do have a question, yeah. Just a couple. Um, before, I do want to acknowledge that then councilmember, remember Andy Rappo did not see that cannabis was going to be the cash cow, that, and the savior for the general fund. So he said it over and over again. And is, is it safe to say that other than cannabis, that all these revenues are either stable or trending up?
Councilmember said, I would agree with that, but I just will caveat that sales tax and TOT are volatile. So if there's any sort of change in the economy, those ones will fluctuate.
But right now?
Right now, correct.
And then, um, you mentioned a business municipal code is outdated. Is that just for cannabis or for other businesses as well?
Councilmember said, I, I believe that the municipal code is outdated for all business sector, for all businesses in Santa Barbara. It really needs to be looked at.
So is that something that is on the city attorney office's workload?
Councilmember said it, uh, there will be a request to include assessments for our current business license tax code. And the finance department will, will work hand in hand with the city attorney's office. The, the scope and the timing and the extent of that is unknown at this time. Again, knowing that it will likely require voter approval requires a great deal of planning. Um, so I just can't speak too much on that at this time.
Yeah, but my, that's what I wanted to add, what Mr. D Martin just said. The law prevents new or increased taxes. And that means if you rearrange it to tax new businesses, you have a two eighteen issue. So cleaning up the tax is really something you do as part of a ballot measure.
So I guess I might, might not touch the details of what it would be, but I think somewhere in our budget documents, um, it's not very clear to me what the attorney's office is charged with from different departments. And even though the communication appears to be clear there, either in the departments themselves, if there's requests of because that would be a major work at for the city attorney's office. And, and say I was interested in looking at a vacancy tax or vacancy fee for non-prime residence or vacant businesses, I would want to be able to balance that with something like the business unit will be updated. And I can't do that if I don't know which of the departments are requesting how much. So I don't know if that's the intention of you to help to present that, but.
No, my councilwoman said, and I'd be happy to share with you the reports I prepared from the departments. So there's some sensitive information in there, but I'd be happy to share that with the council.
It seems to be important for the budget considerations. For how those interact and what we're asking, so that, that was just a, a comment on that. And then just to say that I think that would be something, or would, I guess it's a question, I mean, would a vacancy fee on non-primary residences or on vacant businesses? Would that be considered general fund? Income or? Would that be something else?
I think that's, um, there, councilmembers, I think you've, you've been posted facts to do that.
Okay.
Let's go to yours.
Is there a way, I mean, Mr. D. Martin, that we can get a list of suggested. Areas where we can, you know, increase tax or just ideas where we can kind of fund different departments that are structured. We mentioned about, uh, the business license here, the, the tax used not. How do we get a list of, maybe some suggestions for counseling, you might want to look into these areas that we can.
Councilmember, absolutely, I would be happy to produce those with you. I think the best way to do that is to have a really robust collateral process with department staff to really come up with a comprehensive list. Go through an evaluation process and determine what's sort of the viability of some of those measures, which ones require only city council approval, which ones require total approval. What's generally how much money you could generate on an annual basis for each one of those efforts, I think it would be great if we could produce. An assessment like that and provide it to you so that we can have a robust conversation.
My, my last question is to land to talk about property tax. You know, a big conversation is housing and affordable housing, and Santa Barbara is a very difficult state, uh. Because it's so expensive to have affordable housing, but I think we've done a really good job. And the idea came up. If there is a way that we, because I asked the housing authority, you know, there's, why haven't you been able to buy certain properties in certain neighborhoods where you can, you know. Build more affordable housing and there, there are, you just don't have the money and. They brought up an idea, it's just an idea, I think, I just want you to keep in mind if it's doable, that we. Some of the, the taxes that we get, if we can get like a. Start a fund for affordable housing, so like if a property comes up and the housing authority, you know, sees an opportunity, that the city can help with that. Which we already do, but, um, just to create a fund and it also shows the public that we are trying. Everything we can to help with the affordable housing.
Mr. Piers, I have a curiosity, can you, you don't have to produce it now, but at some point here, uh, you show me how much the city paid for internet service, the cost. Throughout the last few years and then also if we wanted to, uh, provide internet service as a utility ourselves, the city. How would we go about doing that, would that be a ballot measure or would that be something that we can get from? Matter of C.
Councilmember, yes, we could, um, have to work with staff to see if it's full of internet bills, carriers, we will surprise that, that it's new. As far as the city being the utility provider of internet service, we would probably go through a very similar process that we give to community board. And establish the utility enterprise fund and probably require some startup, some startup funds. Um, and to be able to establish a program at set rates, uh, and provide and procure the internet service contracts themselves and then proceed.
Councilmember, we have done some very preliminary looking at whether or not we could. Um, strengthen our fiber optic network throughout the city and allow it to be expanded to be used for, um, private and public purposes. Um, the difference between the clean energy fund and the, uh, utilities such as this is that the infrastructure costs. Are very significant, would be a very significant hurdle to get over because you have to install the, the, the infrastructure before you can start collecting revenues. So you'd need a funding source to, to provide that infrastructure, that, that, that infrastructure.
I understand, it's going to be difficult, um. Probably something as massive as the water plant, but that utility is proven to be. Life-saving and the internet is proven to be a life-saving utility as well and money-making one, so you know, the revenue. So, yeah, that information would be.
Any other questions? Just taking it real quick right now, so. I think we can go ahead and move on with the presentation.
So, so we went through how we generate revenue for the city now, let's talk about how we spend it. Okay, so we're going to talk about our general fund expenditures, next slide please. Okay, as we talked about earlier, uh, what proportion of our, of our general fund goes to pay for salaries? So seventy percent, actually, when you consider, um, sort of non-measure C money, that includes salaries for our employees and all of the benefits. Um, that they receive to us, including healthcare, um, and pension costs. The remaining costs that are non-salary related go to capital investments, you know, materials, supplies, services and allocated costs. Again, as we mentioned earlier, nearly half of the general fund budget goes for public safety, for some fire, that's the, the lying share of the investment of our general fund. Mentioned that salary costs include, and then benefits include not only medical, but also workers' comp expenses, unemployment insurance, pension and a whole host of other, um, fringe and other benefits as well. Next slide please. We're going to spend a few minutes talking about pensions, this has been an area of focus with the finance committee as of late. It is an area where we are, we have seen and will continue to see significant growth of our pension expenses on an annual basis. And the liabilities that we record in our financial statements with our pension costs. We implemented a pension management strategy and we're in the very beginning phase of that, where we've done, um, some education and analysis. And had a great session with our finance committee a couple of months ago, we presented a few options to consider and we've gotten some initial feedback about moving forward. In the coming months, we look to come back to the city council to ask you to adopt, um, some policies so that we can manage our pension exposure much more effectively. Next slide please. We have significant pension costs and a very high liability on our financial statements. Those pension costs come from the normal cost of what we pay every pay period to CalPERS, um, for our miscellaneous and our safety employees. But we also have an unfunded actuarial liability. A majority of payments that go out to retirees comes from the, uh, the rate of return that CalPERS achieves on their investments. And they peg their rate of return at seven percent, but when they don't achieve a seven percent rate of return. An unfunded actuarial liability is created and we are on the hook for paying that. Also, there are other factors involved with life expectancy, um, being longer and, and other costs as well, so our U A L has increased in recent years. Those costs are unstable, our annual costs are outpacing our revenue growth, so councilmember Freeman, to your question earlier, my comment at a prior meeting. I was giving an example of how our, on, on power, annual revenue growth in property tax. Is just enough to pay for annual U A L payment increase. So in other words, we don't have any additional property tax growth on an annual basis to do anything else other than pay for our pension costs. So that was the example I was giving at that, at that public meeting. Next slide please. This graph here shows how our costs have increased for our, our pension over the past ten or so years. The blue bar is our general fund and as you can see that has grown significantly over the past couple of years. Next slide please. So we presented this to the finance committee, uh, back in December and the initial, um, direction that we got from the finance committee was to, to go back. And bring forth a proposal for implementing a pension stabilization reserve. Which would, which would allocate funds directly to, um, paying down our pension costs, uh, over the long run. And then also implementing what's called the section one fifteen trust, which would set aside funds for future pension payments as well. Staff is currently working on this and we're looking forward to bringing that back to you in the coming months, next slide please. Next slide please, so we spend, uh, we also allocate quite a lot of general fund dollars towards capital and measure C, should we go back one slide please? Historically, the general fund has allocated between one to two million dollars annually for capital improvements, those have included playground restorations. Uh, restrooms, information technology projects. There is a, a, a reserve policy that we have where if there is a surplus in the general fund at the end of the year. Which is what we're projecting in this current fiscal year, just over six point five million dollars, that fifty percent of that, of that annual surplus goes to fund capital. The concept there is that a surplus is not something that you, that is easy to project and it sort of happens on a one-off basis. One-time revenues, it's best practice to use those for one-time expenditures such as capital. That policy is in place, it was adopted by council many years ago, um, so that has been used to fund capital in prior years. We now have measure C, measure C generates a substantial amount of money that's been used for the past number of years. Uh, and has been dedicated to a, a number of, um, infrastructure renewal projects such as paving and other major projects, next slide please. You can go forward please. If you're going backwards, one more please, thank you. It will go there, so measure C, this slide here shows our trend of our measure C revenues, um, since its inception back in two thousand and eighteen. It generates around twenty-five million dollars annually for the city, it's continuing to, um, show growth in the coming year. It wasn't declining, so more to sales tax and general fund as well during COVID, but it has definitely rebounded. Next slide please. This slide shows which programs are funded by our measure C, um, district sales tax. Um, you can see that close to seventy percent of general, of measure C dollars are used to fund street improvement, uh, and enhancement projects. But you can see a number of other projects are being funded through measure C as well. As we plan for the upcoming police, uh, headquarters building, you will see that a majority, starting at fiscal year twenty-four. Um, but not a majority, but there will be a substantial increase of measure C allocations to cover the annual debt service payment, um, for the police facility project. The first payment scheduled for fiscal year twenty-four, according to the current schedule, so, next slide please. So we've talked about revenues in the general fund, we've talked about expenditures, so now let's see how the math works out and what impacts that has had on our reserves in the general fund. I mentioned earlier that we have a twenty-five percent reserve policy target. Reserves have been used over the past number of years to sustain us through economic downturn. And they have been allocated in the current fiscal year and will likely be, be needed in the upcoming three fiscal years to come. Replenishing our reserves is a priority and it should continue to be so, uh, as part of our budget conversation, next slide please. This slide shows a, I think a fifteen-year trend of our general fund reserves compared to the policy target. The gray line is our policy target, the bars are our actual reserves at the end of each fiscal year. Again, you can see after the great recession, it took us a while to replenish, come COVID, we had to dip into our reserves significantly. At one point during last fiscal year, we had not only depleted our contingency reserves, but we also started dipping into our disaster reserves. We need our reserves, we, we needed them in prior years, we will likely need them again in the future, so replenishing them and keeping them as close to target as possible. Um, I would recommend being a goal. This year, we're hoping to achieve, uh, a policy target level with our current projection, but come next fiscal year, our base budget projection. Shows that we will be dipping back into our contingency reserves. Um, so we're still in this, in this position of needing to figure out how we achieve some level of sustainability with our reserves. Next slide please. So now let's talk about next year, so in preparation for the upcoming budget cycle. We've done a lot of research in looking at our, our various economic indicators. And really looking at our ongoing revenue, um, challenges and expenditure pressures to develop a multi-year forecast. That really is our model and our baseline for our upcoming budget cycle, next slide please. Let her first just give a high-level overview of what are some of the economic indicators. Uh, and again, this is used to help us develop our long, our, our long-term sustainability plan, next slide please. We'll talk about a few indicators, starting with US GDP, again, as you can see, COVID really had an impact on the economy clearly. Uh, where GDP output declined significantly and has been slowly gradually ramping up over the past number of months. The graph on the right shows the distinction between GDP for goods and GDP for services. And as you can see, the market for goods remained fairly strong, but the market for services was still, um, lower than sort of the run rate projection. And in Santa Barbara, we had a primarily service, um, um, industry, service level industry, so we weren't impacted much more significantly, next slide please. These graphs here show the change of jobs in the various sectors throughout California. The graph on the left was a graph from a little over a year ago, the graph on the right was a more recent graph and what it shows that. The industries that focus on hospitality and restaurants and other services still are not ramping up to where they were pre-COVID. Again, this impacting us a little more significantly, next slide please. California employment has rebounded and not to where it was pre-COVID, but things are improving. But this graph here does show that the employment rates, although not where they were pre-COVID, it will take a little bit longer to get back down to. Um, where the normal employment levels would typically be in California, next slide please. I love this graph because it shows how, how much the airport has really rebounded and it's really come back. And as you can see, when COVID hit, there were basically no passengers going in and out of the airport. And then there was some, some rebounding going on and then things really started to improve and with bringing on Southwest for service. I believe the passenger counts hit record highs over, over recent months and you got a lot of these people come in and out and stay in hotels and spend money, so it's a really great graph to see. Next slide please. California home sales, California home sales really stayed strong, if not even improved during COVID. Uh, most forecasts that we monitor do show a leveling off of sort of getting back down to sort of, sort of pre-COVID normal level of economic, of, um. California home sales, um, to what they were before, next slide please. This graph here shows inflation and this, this graph is already outdated because I believe what came out today was that year-over-year inflation was over seven percent. So my graph here shows it's at six percent. Inflation is hard, right, it hits us on what it costs for us to deliver our services and, and purchase goods. It also has a benefit because our sales tax and T O T and other, uh, tax revenues will likely increase because of it as well. Um, but in general, inflation is, is harder on the city just to maintain operations, next slide please. This is a, uh, uh, this is some information on local, uh, real estate activity for the median home prices. It shows a, a six-year trend of what the median sales price is for residential hu- homes in the greater Santa Barbara area and what the number of sales are. Inventories is sort of your typical supply and demand issue where there is not as much inventory, uh, for the demand and so it's really driving up the sales price. And, um, and, and really making it difficult for first-time homeowners. Again, this does have a positive impact with, with property tax revenues coming to the city, albeit maybe a, a few years delay from when that actual assessment occurs. But again, there's, there does seem to be some sort of leveling off of how much growth there will be, uh, in years to come, next slide please. So we put all that together, I do my fancy spreadsheet work with my team and we develop our multi-year forecast assumptions. Where we make assumptions about general fund, um, revenue growth with our property taxes, sales tax, T O T. We make assumptions about volatility and how, how much that will continue in the out years. We build in all of the known and expected, uh, expenditure increases from our labor M O Us, um, cost of living adjustment assumptions. We acknowledge, uh, what the expenditure growth is for our pensions over the next couple of years based on our actuarial reports. We assume continued inflation increases, our self-insurance fund allocations. Other known things, we build all that into our model so that we can make sort of the best decisions we can with the information that we have. Next slide please. And after we do that, here's sort of the end result at, at the high level, summary level. And what fiscal year twenty-three looks like at the base level and what our multi-year forecast looks like going forward. Again, similar to the other graphs that you saw before, anytime where there's a red expenditure line above the green revenue line, it does show a deficit. And we are projecting a deficit in the general fund in fiscal year twenty-three and in the two fiscal years following that. Again, this isn't. Again, this is as a result of our ongoing expenditure growth coming from property tax, coming from sales tax, coming from TOT. It's not enough to cover the ongoing expenditure growth that we're seeing in our pension costs, our cost of living assumption assumptions, other cost increases for materials and supplies and services and our capital needs. It's just not enough. So we are projecting a deficit in each of those three fiscal years in the general fund. Next slide, please. So the deficit being projected in fiscal year twenty-three is three point six million dollars. So that's our immediate focus, is to figure out how to solve the budget in fiscal year twenty-three so that we don't show a deficit. But again, we're showing a deficit in the next two years as well. So we will likely be in this position unless there are changes that we can incorporate and things improve or able to to find expenditure savings. And in other ways, we will likely have deficits that we'll need to solve for as well. Next slide, please. Go back. Can you go back a couple of slides? Go back. Just right. The forward one, please. Okay, right here. So staff evaluated a number of options. There are short-term solutions to balancing the budget, and there are long-term solutions. And we have been reviewing these for a number of weeks. In order to balance the immediate issue of our of our deficit, there are there are sort of easier ways to do that and there are more challenging ways. And the way that the city has chosen to do that in prior years is by asking departments to achieve some level of expenditure savings. And that's something that we've been thinking about and are are looking to implement for the upcoming fiscal year budget cycle as well. Having the ARPA funds and what city council directed staff to do with them has also helped. By allocating those revenues to the general fund has really helped with sort of reducing the the amount of expenditure reductions that might be required. Also, continuing to use reserves. We've used those reserves before. We will likely need to use them again, which is why it's so important that we have those reserves. As far as shifting gears to thinking more long-term, discussing and prioritizing services so that we're aligning with your priorities as a city council in the community, and then possibly considering revenue generating options that we've been talking about today. Those are some solutions that we need to consider in the long term. Next slide, please. Go back one slide, please. So this is how staff is proposing at the highest level to balance the deficit, to balance the budget, given the three point six million dollar deficit in fiscal year twenty-three. We are asking departments to come up with a total of one million dollars of expenditure savings by identifying specific ways of reducing their expenditures. We have acknowledged that it's it's still very challenging to backfill positions and to hire. We do assume a a level of attrition savings, just the comings and goings of staff, just the normal attrition throughout a given year. We're we're bumping that up in fiscal year twenty-three because of how difficult that has been to hire and the time it takes to backfill positions. And then finally, we're proposing to use one point three million dollars of general fund reserves. And by implementing those three solutions, we will effectively achieve a balanced budget in fiscal year twenty-three at the highest level. Next slide, please. We'll pause here. So this might be a kind of pause. Questions at this point from council?
Thank you. This question is probably for the start. What what is the the city doing? I know for this new incoming chief of police, we're going to and pay just to to compare to other cities and to make sure that that position is giving me a proper amount. But do we see that other jobs in the city are being are just to get full five-year positions because of the pay and the hospital working here? And what are the strategies that you're trying to that you have to say? Mayor Allison, Councilmember of the criteria, is there any questions? Um, you know, the push behind the compensation and classification study was specifically for the purpose of attracting retaining staff. I mean, as we see across the nation right now, there is a dearth of employees, and it's for various reasons, either remote work or childcare issues or just the new workplace as we know it. Do you know, I I think one of the things the city has that other organizations don't have is that work-life balance. And so really emphasizing that, really paying attention to what our benefits are, trying to serve the employee as a holistic kind of entity. So we are meeting those needs. It's it's difficult to find employees because we do kind of live in this island, and housing is very difficult to attain. You know, we we're trying to sound our several of our benefits regarding housing. We're affiliated with postal housing partnership. There's a South Coast housing funding that will allow employees to get some the usual home effects. We're trying to be really creative while also taking into consideration, you know, what how we can attract a more diverse workforce. So looking for job discharges and seeing what we need to do to be inclusive. So we're we're trying to bring, you know, hang signs everywhere we go and then we'll do mentorship programs and developing So we're we're trying a lot of strategy. Really trying to break this one. Thank you for that. Awesome. And I'm sorry, just briefly, a reminder for everyone to really speak up and to
Just two questions. The first one, Mr. DiMartini is, we have that policy of fifty percent of any surplus goes into capital. How do we change that?
Councilmember Freeman, it just requires an action of the city council to rescind the resolution that established that and create another one. And as part of the process to establish the pension stabilization reserve, I would like, I would intend to look at the number of resolutions that the currently have that establishes or not only in the general fund, but across all the funds so that they're that they're comprehensive and consolidated and very clear. Some of our enterprise funds have different reserve policies, some don't have one at all. And so I'd like to establish that comprehensively, and we could address it during that process.
Great. So in in this case, this year, we have a six point five million, so a little over three million is going into capital. So if that wasn't in place, we'd have three million more with that going to the general fund or pension reserve. We'd have three more money to try to allocate to some of these other needs that are going to capital.
So councilmember Freeman, that's correct. You can take council to take to take an action to to reallocate that money to something else to, you know, to adopt a resolution that that does that on a one-off basis. If that wasn't there, then it was followed to the general fund, and then it would become part of reserves that could be used for something else.
And then my other question as we're we're looking indefinitely at your product, the what's about salaries, keeping up with cost of living for our employees and and challenges we face. So for every, so this year, we have a two percent budget. So for the fiscal year coming up, so it's a two percent is in the budgets. So anything above that would would go beyond. So what is the approximate cost agency-wide, not just necessarily, if you could break it down between the whole city and general fund for every one percent of salary?
Councilmember, Councilmember Freeman, I might have to get back to you on that. I would like to give you sort of what would be the one percent core assumption that would be the general fund is what I what I can get you. Might have to do a little bit of analysis with my team to be able to get you that number.
Just trying to see what we can because there's such a, it's 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 really hard enough for our employees, so I want to see during the budget for councils that are considering that and how we can.
Smith.
And so I'm slide one oh two. Um, I think I think I don't understand. So if your revenues are matching expenditures, and those are both increasing, why does the fund balance go down?
Councilmember Freeman, are you looking at this fiscal year twenty twenty-three forecast?
Slide one oh two.
Slide one oh two. In fiscal year twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four, and twenty twenty-five, expenditures are higher than the levels. So the the any fund balance does decline in those three years.
Because that looks like such a bigger decline than the difference between that red night or the one.
Right. The the red, the revenue and expenditure lines are on the are on the the primary axis right here on the left. You said the revenue and expenditures.
These are at the same scale.
The fund, correct, the fund balance is shown on this on this scale right here.
So I think it'd be helpful for me, it'd be really helpful to see on the same scale, which one is exaggerated then? Like I can figure it out.
You have to. You have to.
Thank you. So that's one question. Thank you for pointing that out. I couldn't make that make sense. And then for pensions, and this is a question that's been posed to me, and I don't know the answer, and I'm really interested. So about what it means to be, you know, fully funded? Do we have to be fully funded? If we're not fully funded at a portion of time, can we be made up at a later portion of time? Is that the amount that we're writing a check for and and sending out to match you fully funded? But just it's it's a question that's come to me, and I I don't know how to answer it.
Sure. Councilmember Freeman, that's a great question. So we are not currently funded right now. We are about seventy percent funded, maybe a little bit less. So what that means is that we carry sort of this unfunded portion that we have to pay annually to CalPERS to cover that amount that we're not fully funded. And it's like having mortgage in your home, you actually pay more because of that, you pay more interest over the years because of that. And so if we were to ramp up our funded status, it's cheaper for us in the long in the long run, but it is, you know, more expensive for us in the short term because we're paying off sort of that principal at a more rapid pace effectively. And there are tools that we have available to be able to achieve that goal. We can make additional payments to CalPERS on an annual basis to sort of draw that down. We could set up a section one fifteen trust that would earn additional earnings, interest, to be able to pay it down even further. We can issue a pension obligation bond. There are a number of tools that we have available to us to to achieve those goals.
So so sort of like if you're deciding to do a thirty-year repayment plan or more than sixty-year repayment plan or whatever, but you're choosing to have the cash now or later, we pay it either way.
Right, exactly.
When do we have that discussion about, like, is that this especially year? Or about what are sort of these are set in policy, but whether we would rather have funding now or rather pay it off faster now? What we're talking about here?
Councilmember Freeman, we're happy to help and have a conversation here with you today. We've also, we started that conversation with the finance committee to really to really set an even bar as to what are all the issues related to our pension system and our ongoing obligations, to really dive in deep about what are the options that are available to us to consider and come back with recommendations. And so staff is working on developing those recommendations and is planning to bring that back to the finance committee for other discussion discussions before it goes to the full city council. But together.
That was a good process. I just wanted to make sure this wasn't our one chance to talk. And to talk that through. Okay, thank you. And then when you were proposing a million dollars in savings per department, is that in addition to how much we've already squeezed?
Councilmember Freeman, so no, it is not. So in the current fiscal year, in fiscal year twenty-two, we implemented around six point eight million dollars of expenditure reductions. That's about five percent. So then our base budget for fiscal year twenty-three doesn't assume any expenditure savings, but we have, we have a deficit of three point, three point six million dollars. So our plan at this time to achieve a balanced budget is to implement one million dollars worth of expenditure reduction, so not nearly as much as as the current fiscal year.
So it's like it was six point eight, bring that back down to zero, but add one. So it's really was six point eight, and now it's just one. So they get some funding back.
Yeah, one million dollars of expenditure reductions, that's correct.
Okay, so they're going to get five point eight million back. That's another way. Okay, that helps me. Thank you. Because I was thinking a million on top of that, that's just not going to happen. And then I guess, I don't know, here would be the time to talk about it, but I want to put the question out, and it's a long question. Councilmember Freeman, slide one oh two. But what would be the impact of sort of increasing the salaries of who we have and building the structure of our organization around who we have and versus filling positions that have been vacant? Or looking at some of those, we're just like, you know, we're really looking at a structural deficit. How how much sway and we have an impact with those types of changes?
That's a complicated question because right now, who we have is based on who is in the remaining, in the jobs that are filled. And matching those with the workload needed to address the the issues resulting from currently vacant positions may not be addressed simply necessarily simply by paying people more. And in fact, on all of our staff are really working to their full capacity. And so if if we want, certainly, it's one of the things that we are hoping to talk with council, with finance committee over the next year. And Mr. DiMartini alluded to it in that we will want to work to meet council's priorities as to what what are your priorities and how we could deliver service to the community, and that may mean a shift in that service to the community. But I don't think that simply paying our existing employees more to do more than one job will adequately address the issue. We really need to both make sure we pay them enough to retain them, but also that we appropriately assign a level of workload to them that they can carry.
Thank you for that answer. And I guess this is a good time to to join in the conversation that I don't, I don't like losing our people to other cities in the county, and we used to be the draw, and I wanted to draw again. So whatever that takes to make this the most attractive for our employees to stay and build that back up. That works out. It sounds like we'll go through finance and that the structure, so that answers my question about how how we go about.
So tell me the lure of the section one fifteen trust. So if we have the option of paying more or paying early even to CalPERS to attack the problem, is the lure of the trust that we take that same money and we get a better return than CalPERS would? Or less of nutrition costs? Or why why wired? Why is one better than the other?
Sure. Councilmember Jordan. So it's complicated, first and foremost. And there are, I think it's a good proof for us to guide all those up. So there's pros and cons. If we we can simply make additional payments to CalPERS, we can choose as a city to pay an additional two million dollars to CalPERS. Well, then they assume an interest, an interest earnings of six point eight percent. And so it will reduce our unfunded actuarial liability accordingly. But as we know, CalPERS doesn't always make six point eight percent. It made twenty-one percent last year, which is great. Some years, they go negative. Some years, they make one percent. It's current fiscal year, they're projected to make less than five percent. Then making five percent this year versus six point eight percent increases our unfunded actuarial liability. By not setting up a section one fifteen trust, it's completely within our control. The the way of return we would we would achieve on a one fifteen trust will be less than six point eight percent likely because we're not going to be overly aggressive as an organization with investing our funds in that. But we have control over it to then ship it over to CalPERS when we deem necessary, and we'll earn some additional interest. And it's our money, right? So like, we we control. That's that's the biggest benefit for the one fifteen.
Then you put it back, when you put it in there, if you want to change the use, can you pull it back out?
No, you have to use it for pension limited costs.
And then, so what a better way to describe that be than whatever we did would be less volatile, wouldn't go from twenty-one percent to negative in a year or two. But so we, okay, we we'd suffer through three percent each year, be on the upside of that.
Councilmember Jordan, that's correct. Right now, our investments, we earn about one percent. Maybe a little bit less sometimes, a little bit more sometimes in a section one fifteen trust. The the trends that we've seen range anywhere from two percent over to five percent. So that simple interest earnings is additional money. We could use that earnings to pay our annual payment to CalPERS, CalPERS as well, which would sort of reduce the burden on the general fund and enterprise funds. So there's definitely some benefit from pursuing that.
So you can't really look at it in the in the focus of.
So you can't really look at it in the in the focus of one year of CalPERS. They're doing really poorly or they're doing really badly. It's just to look at it in what would be multiple years of us conservatively getting back a stable amount versus what happens in multiple years of CalPERS.
Correct.
Thanks.
For the question. Okay, very good. If you want to continue, Mr. DiMartini, so thank you so much, all the way to wrap up here on calendar and next steps. We'll go to side seven, please. The budget calendar is an annual process, but it feels like it goes on the entire year. We're in the budget development phase right now. This is our kickoff. Departments have already been developing their budgets and have already been meeting with the city administrator to review those proposals. The city administrator will present the proposed budget to the public and the city council in mid April. In May, we will begin budget deliberations with the city council by asking you to review and approve of the budget so that it is adopted before the end of the fiscal year. And then we go into implementation mode come July and start implementing the new budget. Next slide, please. So I won't go over this slide and the next three slides in detail, but there are over fifteen, I believe, or more specific public meetings in regards to the budget where we talk about fee changes, where you'll review individual department budgets, where we'll go into detail about our revenue projections at the finance committee. There are a number of specific public meetings and they're all laid out here tentatively for council's awareness and so that the public is made aware of them as well. And with that, that's the conclusion of the presentation. Thank you.
So I don't know if anyone has comments. We will, this one, are there people who are hands raised to public for that comment?
Mr. Mayor, there are no hands raised yet. If the person wishes to speak, call the comment. We have a couple of people logged in. Please raise your hand now. Yes, no one is raising their hands, mayor.
Okay, sir, comments from council, issues here?
I have a question. When it comes to recycling, when it comes to recycling all the paper that we use and the plastic that is produced from our buildings and facilities, do we get any revenue from that or is it just get dealt with by Marlboro?
Thank you, councilmember Oscar Gutierrez. We do not receive revenue from recyclables, but the city does receive trash recycling service for free as part of the rental purchase contract.
And councilmember Oscar Gutierrez, also the overall agreement we have with Marlboro does take into account revenues they receive directly as an offset for recycling as an offset for expenses. However, the recycling work these days is pretty miserable.
Mr. Freeman.
I just want to thank Rebecca and Keith and all our staff, but this is a great presentation. This is by far the most in depth, but very concise that I've had in my, this is my fifth time around now. So I just, it's a lot more work, but it's definitely worth it. And so I just want to thank everybody involved with putting this together today and look forward to the the hundred and one meetings coming up.
Mr. Smith.
Thank you. Just, I just want to tie this back to, well, thank you also. This is actually a very complicated and this was really a whole overview. And I want to tie it back to some of our council priorities that we came up together at our retreat and and maybe there's a lot of those lists these, I don't know where they'll end up falling in, but if I don't make the comment now, I feel like they don't need time really overarching. So I just, I'm just going to list them and I don't, you know, I don't know. So I heard, you know, updating the municipal code, really looking at that. We talked about adaptive reuse. Different maybe fees or different ways to be looking at community benefit housing for employees or or some fund for for that. We also talked about State Street and master planning, not just the master planning, but State Street's going to need some tender loving care and fund before the master plan is complete. Some other big ones that we're talking about, Michigan Canyon Bridge, I don't know where that's going to come from, but it's something we've talked about. I want to prioritize people and public safety and capital improvements, secondary staff, actually. Personally, I'm interested in looking at a vacancy tax. I don't know if this is over the next year or when that happens, but I think it's worthwhile looking at. And that's separate for residences that are primary residences. I think those could be community benefit fees that can go into some type of housing fund or something like that. And and I'm not even sure this is the appropriate place to bring any stuff, but since you, I thought I might as well throw it out there now. I am interested in councilmember Oscar Gutierrez's idea about what it would take to be our own communications utility. And then personally, I know this is not the time for extra fancy things, but Francesca Hart, I think we need an update on that he's making that safe before we're improving a lot of different places. Also, there's some safety issues there. And then I'm just continuing to look at, I've mentioned it before, but resilience hubs, maybe grants for that. And it's something that I think in our sustainability, long range plans would be a benefit for community safety. I was in authority partnerships, it's something we've all talked about. And what it would take to underground blow wires and hill sides because I think that's a long term cost savings for fire resilience. That's all.
Mr. Gutierrez.
Um, I just want to thank the staff. I I know that we have gone through such difficult times of COVID and the city has had a lot of pressure and we have also been very overwhelming to you guys. But I really appreciate all your work because you guys are the heart and I mean, council, if you overwhelm me, I'm handling it. I've gone up to it. But this work that was done for this consultation is so incredible because now I can go out in the community and show the work that has been, has been happening and is going to continue now. So I want you guys to feel so proud of yourself. So thank you so much for the administration. Thank you, Mr. Cologne, for all your help. Thank you, Keith. I know you came at a very difficult time and I'm so thankful that you're so there.
And yes, Rebecca, thank you for accepting the position and thank you for keeping us, keeping us in life. I really appreciate that.
And I was wrapping up by saying at some point in time, love to go on a deeper dive on especially being just about, you know, pensions and just about how the actuarials work and the assumptions they make, but I think, you know, not like this council, but the public always looks at this like it's a, it's the kind of look behind the curtain and find out why these these liabilities keep haunting us and keep us from doing a lot of other things, including, you know, you know, compensation issues and whatnot because we're so dogged by these increasing pension costs. And I do know that the actuarial formulas have been in question from time to time, but it'd be good to kind of get a catch up on that, why, why we are where we are. So many of these, you know. And if there are no further comments or questions, Mr. Gutierrez.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I I would like to just reemphasize focusing on all the business districts in my community so that we treat them all equally. And again, to just go over the ability to provide internet to the community or compare costs between COGS and frontier, not our frontier service. They can service the city in itself, but to compare the cost, what, how much of a cost if you go then compared to COGS. And then also just my my support to get more information about whether or not we can do some sort of vacancy tax. And just thank you to everybody. Hope that we work.
Mayor Russ, if there are no further comments from council? I just want to explain to you how we will use the information we've heard today. We we will make notes and we will be expecting to get direction from council during our budget hearings. I've got notes on the things that were brought up and as appropriate, in our budget hearings, we will will bring up what it would take to do some of these initiatives and get further further direction. Some of these would be very significant initiatives and we can try to capture that a little bit. But we we are, I'm not taking any work direction away from today other than to make sure that these items are in front of you when we come to you with our various departmental budgets.
Okay. If there are no comments from anybody in the gallery, we will follow this to you. Thank you very much and thanks for all the time.